Council meeting to order. If you would all rise for the invocation from Father Dave Newhart from Saint Elizabeth Episcopal Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, which this evening will be led by Councilmember McPartlin.
Good evening, everyone. Let's pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for the gifts that you give us and the talents that you give us. We thank you for our council members, for those that serve this city, and Lord, for the residents of this city. We ask that all things will be done in accordance with your will. Lord, we just pray for a good meeting tonight. We thank you for all the blessings that we have for this great city. Pray these things in your precious and holy name. Amen. (Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Yavino.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you.
Are there any agenda modifications this evening, Council? And we'll move on to our proclamations, awards, and brief announcements. We have a presentation this evening on the Employee Health Dental and Vision Insurance Program.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and members of the Council, the Garing Group, who is our broker for our insurance and medical and dental, is here to give you a brief presentation. And I have to commend them on the work they did on getting our insurance rates down. And I think that they did an outstanding job. And I'll turn it over to the Garing Group for them to update you on this.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Dustin Keen, Senior Benefit consultant with the Garing Group. I'm here with Mark Rodriguez, analyst with the Garing Group. So today we'll go through presentation, items for discussion. First, we'll discuss the Employee Benefits Program summary and history. We'll go over some industry overview, updates, trends, go over the 2018-19 renewal process, and then go into recommendations, and then go into questions after that. So to begin, just to give you a quick recap, last year, we issued a RFP out to the market. Through that RFP, Request for Proposal, your medical insurance was transitioned from United Healthcare to Florida Blue, which you had previous to 2014. So the city was well aware of Florida Blue. And through that, there was a savings of about 19% in premium. The city currently has a high deductible health plan with a $1,500 single deductible and a $3,000 family deductible. The City of Sebastian funds a health reimbursement account to their employees enrolled in the health plan, 2,500 for employees, and 5,000 if they cover dependents. Actuarially, this is about a 94% actuary plan. 100% is the highest plan. 60% is the lowest under Affordable Health Care. So 94, that's in the top tier of our entire book of business. It's considered a very strong and rich program. Your dental insurance and vision insurance transitioned from United Healthcare to Humana October 1st, 2017. And your life, long-term disability, and employee assistance program is currently with Lincoln Financial Group. So just a quick industry overview, you may have heard about the Cadillac tax was delayed until 2022. So this was originally supposed to take place 2020. And earlier this year, this was delayed another two years, which is good news. Currently, if you look at the thresholds, the city is well under those thresholds even without any adjustments to inflation. But we're going to keep an eye on that and update you with any news on the Cadillac tax. Three ACA fees, just wanted to give you an update on that. The transitional reinsurance fee, which was always included in your premium, actually was eliminated in 2017. So this is no longer in your renewals moving forward. So that helps us with our negotiations. The ACA Patient Centered Research Institute fee, other known as the PCORI fee, that will continue to be integrated into your premium. It is paid by Florida Blue on your behalf. That fee is roughly $2.47 per member per year. That's built into your premium. It's about $1,200 a year. The health insurer fee, this is the biggest fee. This is around 2.5% to 3.5% of your premium, is actually delayed for 2019. So that helped us as well. 2018, 2019, medical inflation, cost increased about 10% to 12% a year. That's pretty typical for the past several years due to higher technology, right, greater care. Physician and hospital groups are really gaining power, and they're able to leverage their fees, which increase the cost. And prescription inflation, about 12% to 14%. This is mainly due to increase in specialty medication spend, brand name medication, and opioid utilization. Next, Mark will bring you through the 2018-19 renewal process.
Good evening. So currently, you have about five high claimants on your medical plan whose claims total over $25,000. The reason why I mention that is because that gets factored into your renewal. Florida Blue originally proposed a 7.4% increase. That's with no changes to your plan. We were able to negotiate that down to a 5% increase with no changes to your plan. That's about half of what we typically see for an entity your size and in this area. Usually, trend is about 10% increase. So you're well below that. Regarding your dental insurance renewal, currently, your claims are running at a loss ratio of about 101%. To be on trend, you'd have to be more around 80%. On trend would mean a 5% increase typically. So obviously, you're above that. So because of that, Humana originally proposed an 11.9% increase with no changes to the plan. We were able to negotiate that down to a 9.9% increase. We also added a buy-up dental plan. So you now have two plans, two dental plans that can be offered. One is at a maximum of $1,000. That's the plan you already had. The buy-up plan has a maximum of $1,500. So now your employees have the option of either one of those plans. Regarding your vision renewal, there's no increase to rates and no changes to the plan. Your life, long-term disability, and employee assistance program are all in rate guarantee until 2020. So we have a couple of years before we have to think about those. Regarding our recommendations that we came up with working with your staff, we recommend that you take Florida Blue's medical renewal at a 5% overall increase. That's guaranteed for 12 months. No change to your current health reimbursement account funding. As we said, it's well-funded, so no reason to change that. Humana's renewal at 9.9% overall increase. We also recommend you take that, adding the dental buy-up plan, which will give employees that additional option. That's also guaranteed for 12 months. And regarding Humana's vision renewal of no increase to rates, no increase though. We definitely recommend you take that, and that's guaranteed for 12 months. Overall, when you add the cost of these three plans together and the increases, comes out to about a 4.2% overall increase in cost to the city and a 2.1% increase to employees. And now we can open up to any questions you may have.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions at this time?
No.
All right. Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I do have a question for Mr. Carlisle. Through the budgeting process, we always factor in a possible increase to the insurance when we're going through the budgeting process. I would assume this is lower than what we factored in.
That's correct, Mayor. We had factored in a 15% increase, and we came in with these lower rates. So that showed a net balance of about 101,000. I think it was the net return to the city or reduction, 1/18 deduction to the city on what we had originally budgeted.
Okay. So that's great. So our, the overall, as they stated, is about 4.3% increase in the city's cost for maintaining the same insurance policy for our employees.
That's correct. And a 2.1% increase in employee contribution for their family contributions.
Okay.
It's not covered by the city.
Okay. Anything else? All right, great. Thank you. Thank you very much, guys. We appreciate everything you guys have done. All right. I'll leave it to the brief announcements. The only thing I have this evening, Council, is that the Chamber, the Sebastian River Area Chamber of Commerce, will have their annual grill-out night this Friday, August 10th, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. And that's going to be at various businesses throughout the community. My understanding is that it may be mango madness. Now, that's the Vice Mayor who informed me of that. So if that's not correct, please email her. And if you want any more information on it, just go to thesebastianchamber.com, sebastianchamber.com to get more information on that. It's a fantastic night for our business community. Wonderful to be out in the community. Any other announcements from council members? All right. Thank you. At this time, Council, I'm going to go ahead and recess the original, the council meeting and reconvene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. Roll call, please.
Chairman Hill.
Here.
Vice Chairman Kitchen.
Here.
Mr. Dodd.
Yes.
Mr. Yavino.
Here.
Mr. McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you.
Item 7, be approval of minutes.
I'll move approval.
Motion of second. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Leads us to item 7, C, facade sign and landscape program. Mr. Carlisle.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Ms. Frazier's here as well to also add any additional information you may need. Ms. Butler, that owns the building at 920 U.S. Highway 1, is doing some significant improvements to her facade and landscaping, about $101,000. Our program allows for a 50-50 cost share of up to $15,000. And so she's requested some landscaping and some facade improvements with a matching of $15,000 for those improvements at 920 U.S. Highway 1. And Ms. Frazier can answer any real particular questions that the board may have at this time.
Well, I noticed the application is fairly extensive. And in looking at it, it really, this project will really beautify the building itself by removing the exterior stairwell and putting in an interior stairwell and some better roof features. And really, I think that would really lend itself very well to the CRA. And the total for this, there is up to $15,000, but the total project cost is much greater than that in the almost $100,000 range when you factor in the stairwells and the landscaping improvements that they're going to make. So I strongly, strongly support this grant. Anything else from council?
No. It's a very attractive addition to the building, and I'll move approval of the landscape grant as presented by staff.
Second. All right. Thank you. Motion of second. Anyone from the public wishes to speak on the facade, sign, and landscape grant application? Seeing none. Any further discussion from council? Roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Kitchen.
Yes.
Mr. Dodd.
Yes.
Mr. Yavino.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Chairman Hill.
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Leads us to item D, Award Work Authorization Number 1. Mr. Carlisle.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this has been an ongoing planning process to try to unify and beautify and bring the signage down in the CRA to be, one, to be more conducive to the atmosphere of what we'd like to see on the waterfront, provide the right direction to the residents and to the visitors. Ms. Frazier's brought to my attention many times that the parking signs, people don't understand where they could park, where they can't park, kind of a wayfinding, regulatory, all into one, but have some common theme. So we asked the board to authorize the work authorization to help us bring that program into fruition. There's $50,000 in the budget. I believe this is $33,000, just a little over $33,000 for this work authorization. And again, Ms. Frazier's here to answer any questions.
The, this work authorization is for a study. Is that correct?
Yes.
The question I have, then, is if I'm not mistaken, several years back, the city did a study about wayfinding signs. We came up with designs. We came up with locations for them. I'm just curious as to the cost of that study that we did several years ago versus the zero action on that study versus what we're going to do now, being that this is a working waterfront project, which is different than the overall study, which was a CRA study. But I know we did, we actually had, if you all recall, someone come in with a potential design for the top of the sign and presented that to the city. So I know that we've gone through this process, and I'm just curious as to where we stand with the other study and this study, and how we go forward and actually have action on the wayfinder signs or whatever you want to call them.
And Mayor Hill, I do apologize. I am not familiar with that study. I have seen renderings of previous studies, but I haven't seen a compiled study. I will make a concerted effort tomorrow to make sure I locate that. This, this particular project is, is going to be concentrated on the working waterfront. Please be aware of that. We are, we are in arrears, if you will, regarding the signage necessary for the working waterfront park. And so the concept is that we will utilize our existing signage logo, signage colors, and then create that family of signage to spread it throughout the whole CRA. I will make a concerted effort, sir. I do apologize.
Yeah, I am a big fan of this. Again, I think this is, the wayfinding signs are great, especially in these type of community areas where we can direct people to the working waterfront from U.S. 1 at a couple of different locations. And, you know, there's, it's a great concept. It gives it a real good community feel. I just know, and I don't know if the city clerk remembers, do you recall us going through this process at one point recently?
I, Lisa Ann actually designed one of the signs.
Right.
I remember that. I can help her look tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, so just, just, you know, I fully support this going forward. I just want to make sure we're not duplicating funds, and we have a study sitting up on a shelf somewhere, you know, we've got a whole new bunch of staff that hasn't been here for very long, and it's understandable that, that may be sitting up there, and we don't know about it. But as a council member, I recall going through that process in the past.
Wonderful. Thank you. I will look tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the information. I know there's a rendering in my office of a sign, but I've not heard of another study that was done. And we'll be more than, we really want to utilize that information as well and combine it with this and then bring this cost down if we can utilize some of that work. It's already been done and approved. So we appreciate that information. Thank you.
Yeah, I fully support this. Love to see it go forward. Love to see the signs go up. But when, study, signs, let's rock and roll. Anything else from council?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, and almost in the same vein, is that we're right now working on a CRA master plan, and it includes ingredients that kind of flow with this. And it seems like that when we establish a norm for the working waterfront, we're kind of, we're, we're going to be inferring a little bit of what we want done in the rest of the CRA, especially color combinations and so forth. How is that going to combine together with this?
Well, for the CRA master plan, they will most likely be, and I haven't received the first draft, but I've done them myself, so they will most likely be recommending that we conduct a wayfinding study and that we put wayfinding study or signage up, because the current master plan states that. And the current parking plan, that I'm fully aware of these studies, does mention that we are lacking in wayfinding signage. So I do not believe it's going to conflict with the CRA master plan, because I do not believe they'll be coming up with logos and signage. That's not part of their scope. And again, we were, we were trying to, by saving dollars, utilizing our same logo and color schemes that we have today, because we don't want to go and replace all of our existing monument signs that are really in nice shape and are very attractive. We just want to create a family of those signs and bring them along the waterfront. And what I'm hoping, Mr. Mayor, is that I can find this study, and it actually says where these signs should possibly be, even though I have a concept in my own mind. If somebody was paid to do that, I would be glad to utilize that study. So I will look at those.
And then there's also references in here to landscape and hardscape at the working waterfront.
That's correct.
And we've had issues for years with the CRA overlay for landscaping. Would it be possible to kind of try to combine the effort between this and use this as the guinea pig to try to redevelop that overlay so that we can get something that's consistent with what's being done to working waterfront, expand it to the rest of the CRA?
That is absolutely our concept, sir. So thank you for identifying that. I was hoping to express that in my write-up, but if I failed, I do apologize. We are, we are using the working waterfront, which is kind of right in the center there, to, to be that guinea pig, if you will, to provide that, that baseline, and then be able to extend that out into the rest of the CRA. Because then, when you have the same types of features, it becomes compatible, and people get a sense of place, and then they, they know that they are in a public place and in a public area. And it, it really has been very widely accepted and successful in other areas, and that's what I'm hoping to reproduce.
Okay. And I didn't see a reference in the, in the scope document that was done by the consultant to either Florida native or to sustainable or low, low maintenance. And I think that this is the point at which we need to begin that conversation with saying we want to convert to Florida native landscape, we want to convert to sustainable landscape, low maintenance landscape, as opposed to, and there is a good reference to hardscape, because it's, you know, part of that whole concept is less grass and more beds, more hardscape, more Florida native landscape, Florida native plants that don't, that survive drought well and don't require constant watering and so forth. So it would seem to me this, once again, is a good opportunity to kind of build that into the process if we can do that.
Absolutely. And if that is your desire in our CSA cover letter, you know, we can attach the GAI consultant scope of work, but add to our CSA cover letter that we recommend, strongly recommend that we utilize native landscaping and sustainable practices.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see us kind of direct and go in that direction if we can with this study, if it's possible to do that.
Well, I would, I could, I could support the recommendation, not a demand, but a recommendation, you know, our desire would be to see the Florida natives in something that's.
Well, I mean, they may, yeah, they may come up and say, we just, we can't really do it in this area with Florida native. I don't know. But it'd be an opportunity to at least try to do that. Yeah.
And if you will allow me, we are, as you may or may not realize, we are moving towards redoing our, restructuring our landscape code to include much more mention of utilizing native landscaping and sustainable practices.
And that's throughout the city. That's not just the CRA.
Yes.
So we're going to kind of piggyback that onto this program. Any more questions from council? Is there, can I get a motion on this?
I'll move, I'll move approval with the staff to integrate the previous study and to indicate Florida native landscape in the instructions to the consultant.
I'll second that. Anyone from the public which should speak on this item? Hearing none. Anything further from council? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dodd.
Yes.
Mr. Yavino.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Chairman Hill.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Kitchen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. I shall now adjourn. CRA, reconvene city council, and that leads us to item 9, the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Mayor. Yes. I'd like to just remove item G for further discussion.
Item?
G.
G.
Mr. McPartlin, would you like to make a?
All right. I'll move consent agenda, items nine, what are we at? Nine, A, B, C, D, E, F, and H.
Second.
Motion of second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Yavino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Yavino, item G.
Yes, sir. Mr. Carlisle, I was looking at the bids from the roofers in regards to the roofing at the Barber bathrooms at the complex. And I know that we have one bid that's a few thousand less than another bid, but I was looking at the materials that are actually being used. And if you look at the recommendation from staff for the cheaper bid, we're looking at the difference between galvanized roofing and really no description as to what the peel and stick underlayment that they're using versus a 5E Galvalume metal system, which is a combination, and I know from personal experience, of steel and aluminum, and a polyglass MTS peel and stick, which is a, one of the top superior products when it comes to peel and stick and installing metal roofs. So can you comment on that?
I do, and I agree with you that the, the other, the other bid, the materials would be more sustainable, and the board has the right to not accept the lowest price if the other price would provide a better lifespan and a better product for the city. So I do agree that product would provide a longer lifespan, and I appreciate Councilmember Yavino pointing that out. And I apologize that I failed to catch that in my review, that it wasn't the same materials.
All right. So the difference is $2,100. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, but in the long term, one product's a galvanized metal that, and I don't know if anybody from experience driving around in town or in the county has seen pole barns before with galvanized metal, but eventually, they do rust. The Galvalume actually has less of a tendency to rust, if at all, and will last 10, 15, 20 times longer than the, than the galvanized product from the first company. So I would recommend actually.
Would you like to make a motion, Councilmember Yavino?
Yes, I would. I would like to make a motion for approval of the purchase of a new restroom roof at the Barber Street Sports Complex for Leeward Roofing in the amount of $23,968.
All right. A motion of second. Council, any questions of staff or anything on this? Mr. Carlisle, you'd agree that the product would be superior, lasts longer, just an overall better product, and the $2,100 is probably de minimis compared to the amount of improvement that the material would provide.
I do concur that that would be a better, it is a much better product than the straight galvanized roofing. And the underlayment is better explained of what it is, and I use that same underlayment on my roof. So I understand what that product is, and it's a, it's a good product.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Yavino.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. We have no committee reports or appointments unless one of you guys have a report on the committee. Hearing none, we'll move to public hearings. Item 11A will be the second reading and adoption of ordinance number O-18-06. Mr. Stokes.
Yes. An ordinance of the City of Sebastian, Florida, providing for the voluntary annexation for land consisting of 66.87 acres, more or less, located south of Sebastian Highlands and the Elk Cam Drainage Row, west of vacant lands, north of County Road 510, and east of Sebastian River Water Control District Canal, providing for the extension of the corporate limits and boundaries thereof, providing for interim land use and zoning classification, providing for squivers, errors, providing for conflict and severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is the second reading of the ordinance for the voluntary annexation. It has been duly advertised to be considered by you to be adopted at this meeting tonight. And Ms. Frazier, again, is here to answer any particular questions that you may have regarding this property.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on ordinance O-18-06, the voluntary annexation of the parcel on 510? Seeing none. Staff? Anything further?
Thank you. Yes, as stated, this is the Graves Brothers Company's voluntary petition for annexation. The subject property is currently vacant agricultural land in unincorporated Indian River County. It is contiguous to the existing corporate limits and boundaries of the City of Sebastian. The proposed development is within the service boundary for municipal services and has provided capacity concurrency for county utility services. Therefore, staff recommends approval of ordinance O-1806. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Close the public hearing. Council, what's your pleasure?
Move approval.
Second.[1687.86] Motion is second. Any, uh, discussion from council on this? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember E. Vino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Eleven B, second reading and adoption of hearing, and hearing of ordinance number O-dash eighteen-dash-O-seven. Mr. Stokes?
An ordinance of the city of Sebastian, Florida, relating to the comprehensive plan, amending the future land use map by establishing a land use classification of CG, commercial general, for annexed land with a prior county land use designation of R, rural, one unit per acre, on property consisting of sixty-seven point eight-seven acres, more or less, located on eighty-fifth street, County Road five-ten, in the eighty-four-hundred block, south of Elk Cam Waterway and Laconia Street, in the vicinity of the Treasure Coast Elementary School, authorizing findings and administrative actions, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for squivers, errors, providing for an effective date, and providing for an adoption schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, again, this is the second reading of the, uh, future land use map, the change to our comprehensive plan. These documents were sent to the Department of Economic Opportunity and to the other agencies for comments, and I'll let Ms. Frazier go into some of those comments, but we received no comments from the Department of Economic Opportunity and a couple, um, from the county. Uh, this is the second reading, and it has been duly advertised for you all to take action in this public hearing this evening.
All right, very good. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on ordinance O-dash eighteen-dash-O-seven? Seeing none. Ma'am?
Thank you. As, as stated, uh, the subject property consists of an active agricultural site that is no longer economically viable due to changed conditions. Therefore, uh, we are recommending that they, uh, receive a land use change of commercial general, yet they will retain their agricultural zoning and continue to be active agricultural until such time as it is economically viable. As Mr. Carlisle stated, we have, uh, sent this amendment up to, for review by, to the Department of Economic Opportunity, who identified no comments related to important state resources and facilities within the department's authorized scope of review that will be adversely impacted by the amendment if adopted. That letter is attached to your package for your, your review. We have also submitted, um, as required to the other reviewing agencies and received no formal comments from these agencies. Now, we have received technical assistant recommendations from these reviewing agencies, and they requested that we consider looking at the areas south of our city, especially south of five-ten, which is not noted in our, uh, twenty-ten year, just to consider, um, how we might want to move forward with a lack of commercial area that is projected in our twenty-ten, um, evaluation and appraisal report. Please be aware that we are required to update our comprehensive plan by twenty-ten, and we are moving twenty-twenty. I'm so sorry. Twenty-ten, are you fast?
You're late.
Woo, good for us. We're ahead of schedule. Um, so by twenty-twenty, we need to have our comprehensive plan updated, and as we move towards that, the staff does support the recommendation that we look at areas surrounding the city, just to make sure that, uh, we are in compliance with the way we want to develop in our long-range planning goals. But, but we recommend approval of this ordinance zero-eighteen-dash-O-seven.
All right, thanks very much. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Uh, ju- just so anybody who heard what was just said, this does not approve annexation beyond this piece of land.
Oh, correct, correct.
That was just a recommendation that we look at annexation south of the city, which I con-, I concur. I think we definitely should do that, but, um, th- this is basically taking a piece of land we just finished the annexation on and giving it a commercial general and, um, land use. So I'm in approval of, um, ordinance O-one-eight-O-seven.
Second. Motion is second. Uh, any further discussion from council? All right, hearing done. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember E. Vino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, that leads us to eleven C, the second reading and public hearing of ordinance number O-dash eighteen-dash-O-nine, which will amend the construction board membership requirements. Mr. Stokes?
An ordinance of the city of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, pertaining to the construction board, amending the code of ordinances, chapter twenty-six, Buildings and Building Regulations, by providing for retired contractor participation by amending section two-six dash one-nine-one, membership terms, filling of vacancies, providing for codification, providing for squivers, errors, providing for conflicts and severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this was the second reading. Um, as you know, we've been having some challenges with filling some vacancies on our boards, and this happens to be one of them, and they do serve a valuable purpose, and we do not want to lose that experience of those that have been on the board, that are retiring and don't want to maintain their license. So this ordinance allows them to stay on the board, provided they didn't lose their license from some egregious act or some penalty, and allows them to continue to serve the city in most cases for the year, in additional years that they've already done, and, and provide a great service. So we, staff recommends approval of this ordinance, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Great, uh, great idea. Anyone from the public which should speak on ordinance O-dash eighteen-dash-O-nine? Seeing none. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any further deliberation by council? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember E. Vino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, unfinished business twelve A, uh, an update on fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen budget and CIP recommendations. Mr. Carlisle?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this budget, uh, the two eighteen, two nineteen budget is currently funded under the rollback rate. We anticipate maintaining it at rollback rate. Uh, we have, um, made some changes to the budget, and we're going to continue to move this budget in a more transparent, um, presentation in the, as we move through the next budget cycles. Uh, I think that, you know, we've had positive comments from the Budget Advisory Board on the way we've restructured the budget, and from those of you I've spoken to, um, we have some, we have, still have some work to do on, on making this a little more transparent and easy to read, but I think that Ken and staff has, has done a great job in putting this budget together and keeping it within that rollback rate, which is the direction of the council, uh, getting the golf course to pay back some of its debt, the airport to pay back some of its debt. So we've included some of those opportunities in there. One thing we did do, and we'll look for direction on you, we had that excess dollars from the insurance. We put that in reserve for special projects. That's a placeholder. We can put it in stormwater. We can use it for what you need to do, and it still keeps us at rollback. So with that, we'll turn it over to, to Mr. Kilgore. He's got a brief presentation, and after that, we can answer any questions, unless you have questions now. I would be mad.
No, we'll go over the presentation first. Thank you. Brief presentation, as he said.
Brief?
Indeed.
Five minutes, less.
All right, any questions of staff, counsel?
No.
Go ahead.
You've messed my bubble.
Okay, so in addition to the budget committee, we've done the standard, uh, process of taking the capital improvement program to the planning and zoning board. Uh, their remarks were favorable, as well as the Parks and Rec Board looked at all the, uh, recreation programs that are forecast, so, um, you had seen, uh, some of the general fund presentations I have tonight back when we approved the rollback millage, uh, July eleventh. So I'm not going to dwell on those, um, those particular, um, slides, and unless you have questions. And I did want to mention that our current budget is, the current draft that we have at this moment is on the website, so if anyone from the public would be interested. Roll back is at, at the three point one-five-one-four, and is our, our recommendation. We haven't completed our wage negotiations with the bargaining units, so that's still subject to, uh, adjustment. We've got meetings scheduled for next week and the week following. Hopefully before the first hearing, we'll have that resolved and can actually adjust some numbers for that. Uh, just want to stress hurricane reimbursements, having those reserves, uh, five million dollars was good enough for the, uh, for the magnitude of the storms that we experienced. We did get the reserves back up to the five million dollars now with the, uh, reimbursements from FEMA that we've been able to, uh, um, achieve from them. I had presented this schedule, I think, before, the, uh, with the rollback rate compared to last year, homestead properties should see, uh, several dollars of savings in, in their tax bill. Uh, the worst case for other properties that have the ten percent maximum increase in their assess, assessments would, uh, not be too awful significant, but, uh, could be an increase if they had the full, full percentage. The short story is that the general fund budget is two hundred and two thousand dollars less than last year's budget, actually the amended budget for the current year, and I had, uh, some more information about those categories. Um, but full-time additions, we're adding ten employees in the general fund, and we are actually reducing part-time employees in the general fund by, by one. Uh, what allowed us to, uh, add those additional employees, uh, and have money set aside for pay changes is pretty much because we have moved out the stormwater divisions, personnel cost, and benefits, and, and all, all the pay and benefits, uh, to the stormwater revenue fund. And we also moved out, um, you'll see, on operating cost. It was able to go down because we not only moved the stormwater operating cost accounts, but we had the CRA, uh, Riverside area, the maintenance contract for the landscaping moved back and be funded from the CRA. Capital purchases, we have some three hundred and one thousand that would be funded from general fund dollars, uh, as compared to a hundred and sixty-six thousand that was there, or, or for capital last year. What we call our transfers account, where we move money out of the general fund to other accounts, uh, actually my slide is mistaken here. It's, it's nothing to do with the R and R account. These are like capital items where we're setting them up into a project, so instead of having them, we, we like to show the budget document with the capital item that, in the division that it relates to. But for some of those capital items, it's better for us to account for them as a project in our capital projects fund. So we did make adjustments during the year to move them out of the capital account in the division to the transfer account, but, so we're going into this next year with zero budgeted there, but we may do the same routine. We had ninety-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars set aside this year as a contingency account, and that was basically to repay general fund for when we did the early retirement program. So that was the last increment of that. So we do have a savings compared to the past year's budget and this year's budget by the ninety-one thousand. The hundred and eighteen thousand, oh-two-one, I'm showing on the bottom line there, is related to the insurance savings, and as mentioned, we would set that up as a special projects account. Uh, pretty much the same kind of tactics we've used in the past. We, we look at increases in our utilities and franchise fee revenues, as well as our state and, uh, state shared revenues, and we are seeing continued strength in those and expect to, uh, benefit by, uh, projected increases at the four or five percent level. The airport is able to pay us twenty-five thousand dollars towards their, what was two hundred thousand dollar loan, and that'll get that down to forty. So we're making progress in that area. Cemetery trust fund, I'll explain more later in the presentation as far as that transfer, which is new this year. Uh, strategically, we always move any items that qualify to be paid out of our special revenue funds. That would be your discretionary sales tax primarily and rec impact fees. We try to move those over to be funded by those sources, but, um, a- as you see, there was, there were quite a few this year that we just didn't see that was, uh, appropriate. I mentioned the stormwater fund and moving the riverfront landscaping already. The golf course, we, um, have budgeted more revenue. Uh, we think that capital improvements and the restaurant upgrades, you know, will, um, show sho- some, hopefully, improvement in their revenue stream. We do have the thirty thousand dollars, uh, for the restaurant lease income, which, as you know, we are working towards getting that in place. The golf course does pay a hundred and six thousand towards rent to the airport, and we do have it, uh, projected that they can repay the, uh, principal and interest due on the building fund loan that was used for the irrigation system, primarily for the irrigation system that we, we did a couple of years ago. We're looking at carts being replaced out in two thousand and twenty-two. If these projections are correct, and I wouldn't put money on it because we, we are perhaps a little bit optimistic on the revenue side, but you can see in our projections out six years from now that we would have some slight reduction in the amount of deficit, uh, that hopefully will come true, but we, we will see. In the airport, their forecast, uh, looks favorable as far as an increase in reserves. They are able to repay the general fund loan. They are repaying the discretionary sales tax fund for the loans that were made for the two hangars out there. Um, operating rental revenue is increasing, uh, pretty favorable shape that I, I feel that they are, that they are now in. Building fund is, uh, very positive. Increase in reserves is projected. Uh, they were able to add a full-time building inspector as well as to add a part-time clerical assistant that will help in some of the, um, archiving the historical records. Not really in, uh, projecting an increase in their revenues, uh, no telling what, even with the annexations, how fast that might happen. Economically, you don't, it's, it's best to be on the safe side and be conservative, I feel. Our local option gas tax fund, we, um, we've concentrated on using that for road work, uh, road-related projects. The first thing we're going to do is the road evaluation. We've spoken about that before. We are, uh, continuing to pay the notes that were issued years ago. Uh, that payment's about two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, but it does expire like in twenty-twenty-two, so another, another four years of that payment and those money spent can be applied to, to road improvements. We were surprised about a week ago with a, um, notice from the railroad that they were going to do the Schuman Railroad Crossing maintenance this, this coming year, and they expected our cost to be fifty-nine thousand dollars. So we did do a quick adjustment on some of the other gas tax accounts to, to keep that, um, budget in good shape. Parking in Lua Fund, we do have fifty-four thousand, uh, basically in the bank from those previous agreements. They are all totally paid now. There's no current payments coming into that account, but just for your awareness, it is, uh, in that account, waiting for, I guess, some kind of product or expenditure that would be appropriate. Our saving grace is the discretionary sales tax fund. Uh, we're continuing to do computer upgrades, uh, keep our police vehicle fleet in, in good shape, uh, radio system, um, that there's a lot of good projects in there, including matching funds for the stone crop drainage project, uh, should that come together, and the relocation of the Public Works compound. As far as the airport and some of its major projects that we have scheduled, uh, that does provide the matching funds for the, uh, city share of those projects. CRA has some, uh, continuation of some of the, the sign grant program and sewer connection program. Uh, we also, uh, partially fund the CRA, CRA manager. We reimburse general fund for a share of manager's cost, and as I mentioned, the landscaping contract. May I? Uh, rec impact fee fund, um, as I mentioned, these were all covered, uh, with the rec rate, Parks and Rec Board. And stormwater utility fund, this is where we, we now have all the revenues coming in and being paid, and expenditures being paid out of the stormwater utility fund, all the operating costs and all the positions are paid out of there. Uh, we were able to add one position to their staffing. Um, long-range plan is, you know, once we develop some more precise, um, ways of attacking the problems, we are basically having as a placeholder some funds, uh, in the future, using these fees and hopefully leveraged with grant money. Law enforcement forfeiture fund, uh, probably about fifty thousand dollars in that account. Those items, they need specific approval, approval by the city council to be spent, so you would see those coming in on your agenda for approval. So cemetery trust fund, uh, half those sales are separated out and reserved for expansions to the, to the cemetery. The other half can be used for operation and maintenance. The amounts that are in the cemetery trust fund at this point in time, I think, enable us to safely draw out at the level of fifty-five thousand dollars to help offset the cemetery's operating cost out of, that's paid for now out of the general fund, uh, looking out at the rate of our typical revenue collections and continuing to, to have those coming into the fund, even with paying out the fifty-five thousand, I think we're looking out six years from now, and we'll still probably have a million dollars sitting in that account. Half of it restricted for expansions, and the other half still available for operating costs. We do separate out the stormwater utility debt service. Uh, we, we were initially required by the bond issue, and we, even though we've got, uh, bank notes that we, uh, refunded the, uh, the debt with. Uh, we, we were initially required by the bond issue and we, even though we've got uh, bank notes that we uh, refunded the uh, the debt with, um, we still like to just continue it and, and let it run out, run its course. There should be, be a million and a half outstanding at the end of uh, actually next year. I think my data's wrong there. No, I, no, that's correct, excuse me. At, at September thirtieth of eighteen, there'd be a million and a half still out, outstanding. And we'll have about four more years to pay that debt. Wanted to speak as far as the overall capital improvement program and give you a sample of some of the projects that we still have outstanding. Uh, most of these are in, are being actively worked on. Uh, chances are that several of them will be completed before year end, but there is a strong possibility, as we normally do, that we might have to carry over some of these funds and hopefully be uh, be wrapping it up early in like the first quarter of next year. There's a couple, well, several that are pending projects, as I called them. Uh, basically waiting for something to happen, a study or a, a, just no funding in the case of the inclusive playground. The Any River Drive was the purchase of the property and that we had allocated sufficient monies to take action once we possessed the property to either for demolition cost or towards some improvements. So we may want to keep those funds uh, designated. Um, quickly go through, you know, the, like I say, the uh, capital improvement program gives us monies for the uh, audio visual IT type expenditures. It keeps us on the, it programs things uh, for the CA, CRA projects. Uh, we fund our police vehicles and equipping for those vehicles and technology upgrades that we're going to have to do in the police department. We've got the road work scheduled, um, some minor things in some of the other divisions. Parks and maintenance, we've got projects, I think, that are pleasing to the Parks and Rec Committee. Uh, stormwater, we've got the funds, as I mentioned, uh, earmarked or set aside or uh, placeholder status for um, projects out of stormwater. Enterprise funds, a little bit of spend out of uh, forecasted for golf course equipment and the big things in the airport. Uh, that would be primarily grant funded or grant, uh, match for city funds on a grant.
Ken?
Yeah, I have one question on that.
Yes.
The uh, golf course equipment.
Yes.
Now, we're gonna purchase nine thousand dollars of equipment. That will be the, the, the city's possession, the ownership of the city, right? Because the, the uh, the contractor who we have in place out at the golf course has a requirement to provide a certain amount of equipment.
Yes, this, this is not maintenance type equipment. It was like a, if I recall, like a ball washer, golf ball washer and...
Perfect, that answered the question, thank you very much.
And for the um, the driving range collection.
Yep, absolutely perfect, thank you.
And building department, there'd be the uh, additional vehicle for the additional position. Uh, this kind of brings it all together. The major category of the capital program of the thirty-four million dollars over the next six years, uh, thirty-seven percent of that would be stormwater related improvements. Twenty percent would go towards the public facilities uh, relocation of that compound. And twenty percent would be mostly the airport grants type spending. The money comes, as you can see here, uh, fifteen million dollars from discretionary sales taxes that can be used, twelve million uh, for grants and various other contributions from some of the other funds. But the big saving grace in, in the city's case, and I'm so appreciative, that we do have the discretionary sales tax. I just wanted to put in a last comment or kind of wrap it up here with a reminder about the homestead exemption referendum that'll be coming this November. Uh, it uh, gives another twenty-five thousand dollar exemption to properties that are over one hundred thousand in value. Um, I see it as a shift to the non-homestead properties, uh, particularly if the billage rate has to be increased to offset the reduction in revenues by the lesser taxable values. Um, our latest guest estimate is a couple hundred thousand and, and that, that range is probably our loss in, in Sebastian. Uh, and that's based on the number of homestead properties that we have that, I'm just trying to extrapolate from those numbers on our best guess. So we've got the public hearing, the first public hearing is September seventh at a special meeting. And the final public hearing is scheduled for September twenty-sixth. We would love to hear your comments and anything you can offer at this point in time so that we can get some of the documents ready and, and hopefully ready to wrap those up, uh, substitute what, what input we get from the public. So I'd be glad to take questions.
My bad, sorry, sorry about that, folks. Sorry about that. Hey, by the way, I like what you guys have done. So that just pretty much folds all of that in. If you could talk about the decrease um, uh, to rollback rate, that basically means that we're having a zero percent increase in taxes and a zero percent decrease, right? So our taxes will stay the same if we go to the rollback rate, which it looks like we're going to and I would support through this budget process. It looks very good, is that correct?
The theory behind the rollback is that someone with uh...
If, if I may, so if you looked at one, at the one slide that Mr. Kilgore did, someone with homestead property, their rate, taxes actually went down about eighteen bucks. In next year, um, there's some, so we, for the same number of homes, we get the same amount of revenue. We did not raise taxes.
Exactly, so that's the whole key that I'm getting at. So rollback rate means that some people are gonna have less in their trim, some people have a little bit more in their trim, depending on how they're homesteaded and the value of their property. Businesses will see it a little bit differently, but, but with the rollback, they're, they should see very little increase in their tax burden as well.
Yeah, and I would stress that, that, that only protects those that are homesteaded.
Correct, yep, okay. So the, the question leads perfectly to me when you were talking at one of the latter slides that you had in there about the potential for the additional homestead exemption, which is gonna be on the ballot in two thousand eighteen. The impact to the city, you said, was approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars you're seeing, or is it?
I'm thinking more like two hundred, I think it's...
So you're thinking two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is approximately ten percent of the monies that we collect in uh, property taxes.
Little or less, about three and a half million in taxes received, two hundred thousand.
Just so the public is aware then, the, the, if in fact that is to pass and if we were to provide the same level of service that we're providing and we have been providing for many years, then the city would essentially be required in order to maintain that level of service to increase the taxes by approximately ten percent or more.
If you read the bill carefully, there is, the calculation of the rollback rate is not going to consider this additional exemption.
Right.
So even though we'll have a rollback rate, it, it won't make up for these lost...
We'll have to raise the millage, even though the rollback rate will be less than, I mean, the, the rollback rate won't mean anything to us. We're gonna have to raise the millage.
That's exactly what I'm trying to get at.
To cover that two hundred thousand dollars, roughly two hundred thousand dollars.
To keep everything equal, basically, yes.
Right, so we're gonna have to have a substantial increase in the millage rate and it would probably have to be incremental over the years to going forward to catch up to where, to the loss that we'd be taking.
Yeah, it, it's not a sky is falling type situation, at least in our case. I think some other municipalities or counties are going to be a little bit worse off. But if you think about our three and a half million dollars of revenue that we get from ad valorem taxes, one mill is about one point two million. If we lose two hundred and forty thousand dollars, then you're talking two tenths of a mill.
Right. Okay, so that, that's great. And then it's also good to, I know it's not great, but it's also, one of the things that's important to understand is that when we talk about the, the ad valorem taxes or the, the property taxes, that that represents about ten percent of the overall budget that we're dealing with here. But most of the funds that are, that, and revenues that the city receives are from other sources, not property taxes. Uh, so that's, that's key. So that, you know, that, you know, when we talk about property taxes, you know, our property taxes are, are really good. I believe in Sebastian, if they're comparable to many others. And keeping them where they, they are is, is important. And the process that you guys are going through at the city to make sure that we can maintain the level of service and become more transparent through this budgeting process, I think, is critical. But it's important for the public to know that their property taxes, and that's all they really think about out there, is that our taxes are taxes. But there's taxes from every single gallon of gas that you pump, uh, that the city receives revenues on and the sales tax and the, uh, so many other revenue sources that really approximately ten percent is what we're dealing with when we talk about ad valorem taxes.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, one other thing we need to keep in, and to commend the, the council on is directing staff at rollback because rollback doesn't give us the opportunity to, we're taking in the same amount of dollars. So as cost of goods and services go up, we're finding ways to eat that within the budget. So, you know, we're taking a, a two percent cost of goods and services that have gone up. We know what construction costs and concrete costs have gone up. And we've worked hard to try to work that in and try to make our budget still sustainable. So it's not just rollback rate, we're, we're literally doing more with less, even though we have the same amount of dollars. If that makes sense to the taxpayers and to the mayor and to you all.
No question. Anything else from, from council?
Mr. Dodd, I'm sure you have a bit.
No, I, I've got a couple of things, yeah. Um, I don't know why, I mean, why would you think I would have?
Well, you're, you're a budget hog, man, that's, that's good stuff.
Okay, first thing, the um, the, the hundred thousand dollars, a rough hundred thousand dollars that was saved on the uh, insurance. Um, my preference, and I don't know what the remainder of the council feels like, is that that money should either be moved into stormwater maintenance or moved actually into the unallocated reserves rather than set up some fund that can be spent. I think the funds can get out of whack. So my preference is that if we have a hundred thousand dollars we saved on that, either put that someplace where we're gonna spend it, like the stormwater maintenance fund, or put it right back in reserves. You can always come back later if you need it and say, I need to transfer some money out of the reserves to pay for this because it's something we didn't know about. Instead of having it set in there as some form of a, of a fund, kind of like the R and R fund, uh, so that's just my preference on that. I don't know what the rest of the council thinks about that.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would favor that, I would favor it going into the reserve rather than into the stormwater because then it can be spent, if necessary, in other areas.
Yeah, and I, I, going to the reserves, I think, is great because, I mean, we're, that's one of the things that, uh, I think I had a conversation with the city manager today, there's lots of things that those reserves cover other than hurricanes. And one of the things we need to probably think about in our next budget cycle is trying to create some worksheets that, that show all of the things that we have to potentially fund out of the reserves, other than, other than hurricane that hits us. And there are items, I mean, we have, we have retired employees who have a hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of money we have to pull out. And we have a lot of other employees who could retire and that money will have to be covered out of reserves. So we could actuarially do some stuff that allows us to determine where our reserve amount is based on what the potential impact on it is. Um, we know a storm is gonna be a million and a half to two million dollars. So if we have two storms, that's four million dollars. And if the same year we have two storms, six employees who haven't, have, you know, six hundred thousand dollars worth of bet up paid time leave and we have to pay that, our reserves are potentially gone. So as, as long as we know exactly what's coming out of it, then we can address what happens with that. The working waterfront, we're in a maintenance mode on a working waterfront pretty soon. Hopefully, we'll be done with the stuff that we're gonna do with that. Is that something we should move either into the parks arena or is, I'm talking about maintaining that? It's basically a park for the city's perspective. Is that something we should move into the parks arena and fund through the parks arena or how, how should we deal with that?
Well, we have, we had it being, the maintenance being funded out of general fund. And we moved the maintenance into the CRA because it's, it's a CRA function. So you would be, you, I, in fairness, I felt if you're gonna utilize the CRA dollars to maintain the CRA, that the CRA should fund those projects. Again, it's trying to allocate those funds where they come from to where they go. And so we're not taking tax dollars out of the general fund, putting it in the CRA. The CRA could become a little more self-supportive and still be able to provide the amenities and the grants that we have. So that was kind of my thought process and I don't know how the board...
Yeah, I, I, I just, I, I personally think we're gonna have some extraordinary maintenance issues with the working waterfront just by, because of the nature of what it is. And so I don't, I don't know whether we should anticipate that from a funding stream or whether we could just deal with it as it comes up. But it's just, it's a thought, that's all it is, just a thought, uh, as we go through the process.
There would be nothing, Mr. Mayor, if I may, there would be nothing to prevent us from moving general funds for a major catastrophe out of the reserves. But we can, we can look at that over the next year or so on, anticipated. So like you're talking about these unfunded um, uh, liabilities, when you look at your actuariales on your retirement and unfunded benefits, you know, you don't expect every employee to retire. We can look at some of that, I think that's kind of what you and I talked about today and we can look at that.
The, the um, the cemetery expansion, once they finally move all that dirt out of there, is that a project that's on the books or is that gonna be one for next year maybe? Is that?
We have it on the books and what we're doing now is we're actually plating that, the, the sites. We're, we're not gonna just go in there and put in irrigation and roads. I've directed staff, I want a plat, a plot plan so, because you're selling real property, just like you're selling a housing lot, you're selling a grave lot, so it needs to be platted and plotted so that we know where it is and where every, all the amenities can go and not affect those.
Yeah, I just didn't see that anywhere, you know, looking through this information and this, and I'm, I was looking at the preliminary budget that you sent out, not the, not the one that's online right now, because I know you've made some modifications to that.
Yeah.
So, um, and then the, um, I didn't see the police radio system, is that finished or is that still in the works?
There's, I, I just signed off on some stuff, but there's some other um, items that they have to upgrade as well. So it's not quite done yet.
Okay, all right. And then uh, on, on the topic that the mayor was talking about, the Florida League of Cities has some really good stuff on their website about this, this homestead exemption. Uh, and I'm not sure we maybe shouldn't put some of that stuff on our, on our website. They, I, they've, they've done some, and our city attorney can think about it, but they've, they've done some legal review on that. And I think they feel like that that stuff is past legal muster on what we can and can't do. And, I mean, only forty percent of the houses in Sebastian, I think that number's close, but forty percent of the houses in Sebastian are homesteaded. So the other sixty percent of the homeowners and all the businesses in Sebastian are not gonna get any protection from this. They're gonna, they're gonna get a real, they're gonna get a tax increase equivalent to what we lose on the forty percent that are homesteaded, unless we cut services. Because the general fund, which is driven by ad valorem taxes, is where we pay for all you guys. That's where we pay for all those services and, and now, now we can, we can do roads out of the discretionary sales tax, but the general fund actually maintains our staff and it maintains a lot of things. And that's what's impacted by the ad valorem tax structure. So those forty percent that save fifty dollars on their taxes because of the new exemption, um, the other sixty percent of the homeowners and the businesses are gonna pay that. I mean, I, I can't think, from looking at how lean our budget is, I can't imagine that we can save that kind of money in any budget year. Uh, but I don't think we can reduce it, the gen, the, the general fund or the ad valorem taxes by that amount in any given year. And um, so it's really just a transfer. It's a transfer of taxes to one class of homeowners and to the businesses. Uh, and that's, that's the stuff that's actually pointed out real well in that Florida League of Cities information that's out there. Um, and other, other thing is if you look at your trim notice, if you're out there and you're a citizen and look at your trim notice and make sure that your trim says your taxable value is over a hundred thousand dollars. Because if a trim doesn't say that, you're not gonna get benefit from this. So the forty percent that are homesteaded, how many of those have a taxable value? Not the big number in the trim notice, the taxable number. Especially if you've been in the Save Our Homes for a long time, you may have a house that would market for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars that's listed as taxable at eighty thousand dollars. You're not gonna get a single, you're not gonna get a benefit from this new law, if that's the case. So you need to look at that trim notice and see what it does for you personally versus what it's gonna do for all those people who are being hit with that, I think. It's in, and that's the kind of stuff that's important for us to let people know. I don't know whether we're walking on legal eggshells by talking about it or not, but it's important that we let people know. So, that's it.
Mr. Stuck?
Oh, yeah, I can, I can definitely chime in. And while you were talking, I went to the Florida City's webpage and they do have, you know, an excellent thing. And, and they're focused on education, which is what we can do. Um, and uh, providing a link maybe on our page or on Facebook page to this stuff would be uh, would be a good resource for the citizens.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Is that all?
I'm done.
You're quite finished, very good. Any other questions of staff from uh, city council at this time?
No.
Anyone from the public which should speak on the uh, the budget update that we've gotten today? All right, very good, this is a non-action item, this is just an update. Uh, thank you very much, staff, uh, for the hard work. And, you know, I also like to thank the Budget Review Committee, uh, who did a good job of, of getting through this. And, you know, it seems like this process this year was... seems like this process this year was much easier than previous years, so that must be that staff and the Budget Review Committee are doing a good job of working together uh to get this done, so thank you very much for that. All right, council, uh it's time for public input, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on any item that is not currently on this agenda? There's no new business. Mr. Stokes, do you have anything to bring to us this evening?
Uh, no, sir, I had a good vacation, and I thank you for the time off, but I'm back at it now, so um nothing nothing new tonight.
Well, it's wonderful to see you in that chair, and I'm glad you had a great vacation. Mr. Carlo?
I don't have anything other than the fact to just let the public know, there will not be a second meeting in August, the next meeting won't be until September twelfth, just for clarification, that's all I have.
All right, Ms. Williams? Mr. Yovino?
Counselor McPartland?
No, sir.
And I have nothing further this evening, Vice Mayor Kinchon?
No, sir.
Mr. Dodd?
What's the status of the uh stormwater utility ordinance that we looked at? Is it gonna get done quick enough for us to do something with that before it needs to get to the tax collector?
It won't get to the the trim, it won't get on the tax roll, we're gonna, we're hoping to have something to you for the September twelfth meeting, but we would not have time to evaluate all the properties and get everything done, but staff and and has been working very hard on it, we've had several meetings on it, and uh I comment, Ms. Frazier, she's spearheading it along with Mr. Walker and our and our staff, and so we're working on it, we we think we've come up with a fair and balanced plan, and we're we'll be bringing that to you for you to consider, hopefully on the se- on in September.
Thank you.
All right, there being no further business, we are adjourned.